Advisor Committee to the Board for our regular meeting on Monday, September the 11th, 2023, please rise for the flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you all for coming. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
And Chair Barker.
Here.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I can make that motion.
And a second?
I can second.
Any discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Do I have an approval for the minutes of our previous meeting, August 14th, 2023, our regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
All support.
And any discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
The next item is public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda, so it will be something that is not on our agenda at this point. Seeing none, we will go on to the whole business. A is the site plan review for 805 and 825 East Main and 112 Horatio. And the way we will handle this, again, it is strictly on the site plan review for 805, 825 East Main Street, and 112 Horatio has nothing to do with on the vacating of Horatio Street, nothing on the zone mixed-use development. So those items are not on our agenda tonight, will not be discussed. And secondarily, we will have comments, obviously, from Greg Taylor, I believe, from Copper Rock. And after his comments, we will give opportunity to the general public. I would ask you to limit your comments. We will hold you to a three-minute thing if necessary. I would like to think that everybody will respect each other's time and try not to repeat things or just simply say, I agree with what has been said before. It would be appreciative all the way around. So that's how we'll handle it. And at this point, I'll open it up for Andy to start us off. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you recall, two months ago, we had a meeting where Copper Rock Construction submitted an application back in July, and you considered the application for a rezoning of this property to the mixed-use district. And then they also submitted at the same time an application for a site plan review. The planning commission did recommend approval of the rezoning of the property to mixed-use that was subsequently adopted by the city council and is now in effect. And so at that same meeting, you then postponed any decision on the site plan for two months. So that brings us to tonight. The applicant is seeking to construct a mixed-use building that would consist of 44 apartment units and about 300 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor that is permitted by right in the mixed-use district, but there are some steps that the applicant had to go through. Obviously, one of those is, you know, seeking to vacate Horatio Street, which they are in that process. That does not have anything to do with the planning commission, but just so you're aware that's something that's going on in the background. And then in addition to that, you also would need to then review and approve the site plan, which is the purpose of our meeting this evening. The, like I said, the building itself is permitted in the mixed-use district. It's in zoning, we consider it to be a mixed-use building because it does contain multiple uses. There's a commercial, what I believe is going to be some kind of restaurant space on the ground floor. The rest of it will be taken up with multifamily dwelling units, so that is permitted by right in the mixed-use district, since that's why we're only proceeding with the site plan review for the project. So I think, Mr. Chairman, the applicant can probably give a little bit more detail and give us a background again and just to kind of get everybody up to speed on where things are with the project, what they're proposing. And then from there, I think we follow our normal process, which is to walk through the standards and considerations for a site plan review for the project, and then the planning commission can make a decision, or they could, no, I suppose if you want to, but that's kind of how we want to proceed. So I think from here, we can turn it over to the applicant, and then if you want to accept public comments after that, we can move forward.
Okay. From Copper Rock, I believe, it's Greg Taylor, correct?
Yes.
And if everybody, when you do come up, please give us your name and your address. Appreciate it.
Again, Greg Taylor with Copper Rock Construction, 6467 Fieldview Drive. Thank you for that introduction, Andy and Mr. Chair. Good to see everyone again this evening. As you know, we were in here two months ago, as Andy pointed out, and had a variety of different discussions since then relative to this project. I think there were several suggestions this board made to us, and we tried to follow through on those that we could and the time allotted to us during the tabling period. I think a couple of the things that I wanted to point out, first of all, not to repeat anything that Andy has already repeated, so I apologize if I do that, I want to make sure that you folks know that there are representatives tonight here from our architectural firm and our engineering firm. So if you do have any detailed questions, we do have access to Gold Dixon Architecture and Rosine Engineering who have been working with us on this project since we began about a year ago. As you know, this is a property that we've been involved with, so we're trying to improve the gateway to the east side of downtown consistent with the master plan, future land use plan, and all the city ordinances. To the best of our knowledge, this plan meets every requirement of those ordinances and the zoning. If that's inconsistent, please let me know, but our understanding is that we've done everything per the ordinances and the requirements. The project, we think, is high-quality. It was designed purposely to have a transitional look, so it does have gable roofs that kind of read like a residential type of property, as well as being mixed-use with commercial components that Andy described. We purposely have tried to find the right level of density for this property, so we looked at larger densities, we looked at smaller densities, we looked at more floors, we looked at less floors, and we came up with what we thought was the most responsible, efficient, safe, and economically viable project for that combined 1.46 acres, including the Horatio piece. A few things to point out, and again, this may be all old news to this board because of your local knowledge, but I want to just make sure that people are aware of this. You know, Horatio Street, which is a relatively short street, has one address on it. That's 110 Horatio, which we're the owners of, or our clients are the owners of. And we confirmed with the city there are no underground city utilities there, there are no large utilities that we'd have to relocate. You know, it's a relatively simple street if you were to vacate something from those regards because you don't have multiple addresses affected and those types of things. Obviously, because it's a corner parcel, and it's a triangular parcel, there still will be streets on three sides, Grove on the east, Avery on the north, and East Michigan or two, East Main on the south. So we think we have a quality project that will be that gateway project that will read well as you're coming into town from that part of town. Some of the things that we've heard since we met with this board and with the neighborhood and other people in the community, obviously, there's some concern about speeds, parking, traffic, all those types of things relative to M21. And so we've tried to use the two months that we were given during the tabling to try to do more of an investigative overview, do a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the facts that we can quantify. I won't go into traffic accidents because I believe the city staff has already informed the board on kind of the nature and the number of accidents in that area of town. One of the things we did, and again, these aren't numbers we haven't verified, we verified these with the MDOT, right off the MDOT website, that there is a location between Grove and James where MDOT is measuring traffic on an annual basis. And we've noticed that over the last three years, the traffic counts have been relatively steady there, about 58, 59 hundred cars per day is the average traffic. Some years it goes up, some years it goes down, but by very incremental amounts of a few hundred cars per day when MDOT's measuring that. Now, it would be obviously disingenuous for me to stand here and say that there wouldn't be any additional traffic added to Main Street if this project were to go forward as we proposed. But I also think we've fought from the beginning that we wanted to do everything we could to try to minimize that traffic, so we've removed multiples of curb cuts, including Horatio Street, obviously, from the access to Main Street, so that our clientele, largely the apartment dwellers and the commercial visitors, this commercial space during the day, will have two options to leave the property on the north side of the property and reduce speed, where they have to turn, make another turn at a relatively quick and low speed to get back to either Grove or to go west to Division, if you want to go north and south. Again, based on what our engineers and our architects, we and the city all thought was the most responsible way to do this, that's why we chose to put the parking on the back side of the property so that our traffic could largely come off the north side at those decreased speeds. We don't have within our purview the control to put any type of signalization at the corner of Grove Street. Obviously, that would require both MDOT and the city to agree to that. We are very open to participating in any type of conversation to try to make this a more safe vehicular neighborhood, if that means traffic reduction in terms of traffic speeds, if it means signalization. We know MDOT is not the type of entity that you can do some things unilaterally or quickly, they're very methodical, but we're very open to participate in those types of things. As I'm looking at the traffic patterns and the parking that we discussed on multiple occasions on this, again, it's our understanding that the parking that we have supplied here would be primarily for the, excuse me, exclusively for the apartment dwellers on the eastern portion of our parking, and then the western portion, where we would have a shared lot that would be used for commercial purposes during open hours for whether it be a restaurant or office space or whatever the commercial uses will be in that particular space. That lot will be policed by us. The residential people will be able to use both lots in the evenings when a restaurant is not open, so that'll take less burden or cause less of a burden to the on-street parking, which, again, we've been told, and we can count within 400 feet of this parcel like other developments in downtown. We met with the neighbors. We held a kind of an open forum, informal gathering, where we had roughly 30 people who showed up and gave us their opinions firsthand, many of whom I'm sure are here tonight. I recognize a lot of faces from those conversations. We had multiple people there. We spent about three and a half to four hours fielding questions. I think that was one of the things that the board suggested maybe we should consider during that tabling period. It was very informative. And the site plan you have before you tonight is a follow-up on those discussions. There are several things that we've added here, and again, I'm sorry it might be redundant, but I want to make sure that they're pointed out, that we heard that there were concerns about pedestrian traffic, pedestrian safety, so we added a concrete sidewalk on the north side along the entire length of Avery on our site, and that goes down to Grove, down Grove to tie into the city sidewalk that would be running down Main Street, so there would be sidewalks on three sides. That's a significant improvement, we think, again, based on the neighbor's feedback. We thought that that was very reasonable for us to make that accommodation.
Sue, can you pop the screen down so they can see the actual plan on the screen that might help? Oh, thank you. Sorry to keep you up.
Thank you, Andy. And there were several other things where we made accommodations where we could that wouldn't make this a wholesale change to the project, but we thought would incrementally increase the efficiency and some operational elements of the property. We've changed the curbing in our parking lot so that we have extra space to do snow storage on-site. We've agreed and planned to put a stockade fence along the west property line abutting the neighboring home, and we've agreed if it would be permissible, even though it's not something that your ordinance requires or allows, we would raise a portion of that by a couple more feet, which is something that the, our neighbor requested to take it from a six-foot fence to an eight-foot fence for a portion where her homes lays. So we would be open to that, those types of, you know, reasonable accommodations. We've also taken a very hard look at the vehicular and parking situation. We've widened the main vehicular access point into the residential parking lot so that there's less chance for congestion, whether it be from the vehicles for our residents or whether it be a garbage truck or any other type of vehicle like that that might be in there. We modified our sidewalks internal to the site to reduce those, increase the green space because we thought that we had an overabundance of sidewalk, again, to try to best utilize this prime in our site. There was a lot of talk at the neighborhood meeting about the safety, particularly of the safety concerns of the residents on the south side of Main Street, which there are four or five homes there that are obviously run from Grove down past Horatio, that we're very concerned with the traffic speeds and potential accidents. So what we did is we consulted our engineer, got their opinion on what are the best practices, you know, would it be a wholesale removal of the parking, like some of the neighbors were suggesting would be the safest route to give them both increased vision, but also hopefully increased safety. And our engineers and other engineers that we consulted that we use on other projects all came back to us with a professional opinion of the best practice is actually to have some parking because that does calm the traffic speed, because even though there are people out there, obviously, who may ignore those types of situations, that by removing all of the parking versus some of the parking like we're suggesting to try to increase the vision of those people entering and exiting their homes, if you remove all of the parking, oftentimes what happens is you've created a passing lane now, and people will use that passing lane as a D cell or X cell lane, which actually is a less safe condition than having some parking. It's kind of the same logic as having a white lane.
Don't mean to interrupt you totally here, but I think it's to remain. Whose call is that? City? State? Anya?
I mean, it's actually mine. It's just mine.
It's mine.
Yeah, I guess so, yes, it's the city's. Now, again, we're, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm relying on the professionals that we've worked with on a daily basis to get their feedback. Obviously, the last thing we want is an unsafe condition for either our residents or our neighbors, but we're just, I'm communicating the feedback based on everything we've done in the last couple of months. So again, I may be forgetting one or two things that we've changed to the site plan to try to make, again, reasonable accommodations. This project, if we were to change it materially in terms of the size and scale, quite frankly, it just economically doesn't work. We know that there are a variety of things that could be built on this site. I asked openly on several occasions, both during the neighborhood session and others in the community, this is your community, what else would you like to see there? Can you give me something specific that would be viable, where we could use the investment that we've already made? I was given some genuine responses, but they were things like community centers and things of that nature, or some other type of recreational use similar to the previous uses that have all kind of died on the vine and had their time. We couldn't come up with any answers to that question that we thought were as viable as what we're proposing. There's essentially no housing stock in terms of rental units available right now in Lowell, so from a demand perspective, we know that there's certainly a pent-up demand for, you know, modern, new, well-made and well-maintained apartment homes. And we also know that from the appraisal we had done, the highest and best use that the appraiser came back with was exactly what we're proposing. So again, we're trying to do everything as responsibly as possible, and even though it's not required under the site plan review process, if you'll indulge me for just a minute or two more, I also wanted to share with the audience and with the board, you know, that there are some operational things in addition to permitting the parking so that we can police that, as I mentioned earlier. There are other things that we're planning to do on this that are operational that, again, don't check a box on a site plan approval, which is what we're here for, but things like making sure that we install, professionally install blinds in every one of the windows on this property that face in any direction at our cost so that we know that there won't be a broken-tooth look where we have some units that don't have blinds, some units that do have blinds or different colors, you know, those types of things. You know, we use a lease agreement that has, and I shared this with some of the neighborhood folks, you know, every one of the leases we sign has a quiet enjoyment clause, which means every one of you, if you were a resident of ours, have the same right to live in a quiet, clean, and safe environment. And our responsibility as property managers is to give you the, you know, equal service for the rent that you're paying us. So, you know, we have a 24/7 maintenance function, a 24/7 property management function, and we're very dutiful in making sure that it's a safe environment for all and that it's quiet. You know, our lease has quiet hours after 10:00 PM, so it's not as if this is going to be an overly rambunctious type of situation. And again, doing what we think is the most responsible thing for this asset based on the zoning, the master plan, the future land use plan, the ordinances that are in place, and the market conditions as we see them and as others have verified to us. So we would ask that you consider these modifications as our good-faith gesture to the community and to our neighbors to try to do everything we can in terms of reasonable accommodations to modify this plan so that it takes into account many of the concerns that we heard regarding pedestrian and vehicular traffic. I know it's impossible probably for us to check every box and make everyone completely happy with change like this, but again, we're doing our very level best to try to do what we can with the resources and the skills available to us to try to deliver the best product we can to Lowell and to our eventual customers. So thank you for your consideration, and again, myself and our team are here to answer any other questions you may have as we move forward.
Thank you, Greg. And I would offer, if you want to have Rosier, Rosen, engineering or Dixon Architects, if you want any of one of them to speak, it's up to you.
Or anything, gentlemen, that you think I missed that's material?
Okay, thank you. Obviously, we will ask questions as we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment, and again, we will hold it until three minutes each. I would ask you to be respectful of the time of everybody here, frankly, and try not to repeat things. When you come up, please give us your name and your address.
John Sterling, 711 Avery Street, and I'm going to apologize before I start speaking if I can speak, and that is, you know, I was unaware of a lot of these things, so a lot of stuff I have is things that have gone through my little brain and I don't want to put down. And all I had to work off of was a thing that's sent in the mail. I put a magnifying glass to it to see that whatever, and I couldn't tell, you know, some of the points that I have here. So what I did was I went through the standard review thing, and I picked out three of these, and the three that I'm going to talk about is the site plan, traffic, and safety. Those are my issues. And some of these have been already answered, but I'm just going to read them off and I'm not going to discuss it and make an issue out of it. I'm just going to present it, and you guys can discuss it, whatever. I was told by City Hall that I could have five minutes to speak. Now I'm down to three minutes, and I've got 20 minutes worth of presentation. I told them, I was told I couldn't do a presentation. So I'm going to do the best I can, and I'm going to start with a site plan. My concerns, my thoughts were lighting on building and parking lot, not enough trash disposal space, headlights and parking facing north in the property owners on Avery Street. Is there onsite laundry? My opinion, there's too many units for the size of the property. Are there any patios or outdoor spaces for the tenants? Snow removal, where are you going to put the snow? Water, there's no water on Avery Street. I'm assuming it's coming off of Main Street, and I've heard a lot of comments that, you know, water supply on Main Street might be an issue. However, I see that there are two fire hydrants there, so I have no proof, but I just know that if you're going to drag water off of Avery Street, good luck, because there isn't. Mine comes off Division, other than the corner. The sewer line on Avery Street is, I believe, eight inch, and are you going to take the sewer line off of Avery Street or are you going to go to Main Street? I see limited green space. My opinion is if the building is two or more, or more than two stories, you have to have an elevator, and I can't tell if there's one in my little sketch or not. Retail space, I don't know what that means. I've heard restaurants, I've heard the whole bottom floor is going to be, so I really question that. And can you get emergency vehicles in and out of that place when you only have one entrance, one exit off of Avery Street? The master plan, I'd like to entertain that for a second. My theory is that the downtown Lowell used to be...
Down there, two and a half.
Two and a half? That's my first page. Am I going by watch? Was it down before me timed?
He was over ten. Continue. What do you like? John, go ahead and say what you're going to say.
I like to say it. I'd just say it. Okay. Old downtown, you know, used to be down there two or three blocks. Downtown now is coming this way, and I really feel sorry for those people that are on Main Street that the master plan needs to consider, you know, next door, restaurants, fences, that kind of stuff. Traffic, Avery Street. If you're going to take and divert all the traffic from Avery Street to Grove Street or Division Street, that's going to be an issue. You're talking 85 to 100 cars that are going to be going by there constantly. Okay. I have to stop?
Yep.
You know how much time I put into this? You got three minutes?
Look, guys. Hi, I'm Trudy Kahoon, 2599 G Drive, but I am here because I own Kaiser's and that is 700 East Main Street. And first off, I was not invited to their little neighborhood chit-chat, so I don't know what happened there.
Thank you.
No, no.
Oh, there I was.
Yes, you invited me, but I had to feed people, so I couldn't, I couldn't be there. But my main concern is the parking and the traffic that's going to happen there, and it's already like people pulling out of Kaiser's have to stick their nose way out into the road and people fly by, and so that's my biggest concern. My other concern, obviously, is they're putting a restaurant across the street from my restaurant that's been in this town for 78 years, and kind of hurts my feelings a little bit, but whatever, you know, we all got to do what we got to do. So I'm just concerned about the traffic and the parking.
Justin Phillips, 721 East Main Street, also known as the Ford Soul, but it's just the west of this proposed property. It's easy to say it's a good idea when it's not sitting at the doorstep. Admittedly, prior to moving up... Admittedly, prior to going through this process, if a similar situation occurred in another part of town, I would have likely been agreeable with plans, as I'm sure some of you are. Second, of course, we need more housing, and we do. However, the proposed project is far too large for the area it resides in, creates concerns for safety, privacy, and more. We've been advised by our realtor that this property will most definitely impact the number of buyers' interests in our home and will also impact our property value. Imagine if every single resident surrounding the current rollaway loses just $10,000, for example, in their property values. People have to work incredibly hard to purchase every penny of their home and can't see that amount of money get washed away overnight. The word welfare, stated in Site Plan Review Standard A, is advised as the health, happiness, and fortunes of a person or group. How much would we have to lose? How much happiness do we need to forego? Current views of our east side windows and front porch, I think, show spectacular in the mornings as the sun rises through the trees. We have a very early rising toddler in our home, and just a couple of weeks ago, as we opened up the curtain, she stated, "Mommy, the sun is out. It's not hard, it's not dark anymore." Now imagine a 40-foot tall building just 10 to 15 feet away from our property hovering over our home. That's closer than these walls are apart in this room. With a front setback 25 feet planned, we will quite literally be living in the shadows of this new building. A study published in the Journal of Environmental Psychology found a significant impact on nature, of nature on mental health. Features such as a vibrant sunrise are important, and these can significantly improve mood, enhance pro-social behavior, and increase positive emotions, thereby helping us enjoy our physical and emotional well-being. This decrease in our health will also increase the need for electricity use during hours where we typically relied on sunlight. The Copper Rock proposal also includes cutting down approximately 13 trees just in the south end of the Horatio Street property with very little green space at a back pine completion. A decrease in green space and sunlight exposure has a risk of negative health consequences, whether physical or mental. This is just one area of the site plan that creates a negative effect towards the public health and welfare of the community, as stated in Site Plan Review Standard A.
One minute.
Second, we have concerns of privacy. All remaining living spaces, including our bedroom windows, face the proposed building. Due to the size and proximity of the building, we will be required to invest in additional privacy measures. Always have our blinds closed. We're on the risk of leaving our lives and our children's lives on display. Even with additional measures, the size of this building prevents us from being able to enjoy our home and property as it was intended. Our backyard and front porch will be on display at all times to apartment dwellers and restaurant growers. Additionally, we request the planning commissions to deny an outdoor dining space as it nominally creates additional noise, odors, and potential for rodents and other animals, but limits the ability to privately enjoy our property and adds to the side yard proximity. These concerns should also fall under Site Plan Review Standard A.
Thank you.
Hi, Shelby Phillips, 721 East Main. Our third and fourth concerns are safety and parking. The addition of 110 vehicles and many not even accounted for are detrimental to the safety of our children in this area of town and to drivers on Avery, Division, and Grove. This area is not designed for this much vehicle traffic. If Horatio is vacated, Copper Rock is removing a road that makes accessing Main Street easier and safer. Additionally, I see that Copper Rock has included sidewalks on Avery in their update, but that only goes so far when the remaining residents do not have the space or ability to add a sidewalk to their property. A majority of residents on Avery have small children who are currently able to walk, ride bikes, and enjoy nature without a major concern for vehicle traffic like you would see on Main Street. The current drivers on Avery are predominantly residents of Avery and Grove and are aware of and have an investment ensuring the traffic safety of our neighborhood for our own good and for our children. Furthermore, despite the ability for a mixed-use district to see on-street parking within 400 feet of the property, the lack of concern for safety that comes with this exception is appalling. This is a safety concern for current residents and for future residents of whatever is decided at the current rollaway. You can say that it's hypothetical that accidents will occur, but this is the reality if off-street parking is not addressed, and let's just say I wouldn't want to be the one parallel parking day after day as a semi-travel's around the corner heading west at 40 to 50 miles per hour. It's naive to only plan for one parking space in a one-bedroom apartment. If a couple occupies a one-bedroom space, it is incredibly likely that they will not only own but have a need for two vehicles. When my husband and I first lived in an apartment, after getting married, we owned two vehicles, which was a necessity due to our varying employment schedules and locations. Many in Lowell travel outside of the community for work, and you can read the headlines where remote work is on decline. This creates a need for residents to occupy vehicles, especially in a town with little rideshare availability and no public transportation. Where will these vehicles park in the winter? Where will guests of current residents park if on-street, if on-street parking is occupied by apartment dwellers? Will I too be able to park on the road in the winter, or are those variances only to those with the biggest pocketbooks? These concerns of safety and parking follow the Site Plan Review Standard A and B.
One minute.
During the July Planning Commission meeting, a temporary car sale lot was denied citing concerns for community safety and well-being. This, on the other hand, is permanent, and this is our life every single day. It will be what we wake up to and what we go to bed to every single night. It is not a lifestyle any of us ever chose when we purchased our homes, and we should not have to suffer the consequences of what money can buy. I think you would agree if this was your home. Our children should not have to go through this and be shielded in their own homes and backyards. Copper Rock stated that this is what was viable. I'd argue there's a big difference between viable and most profitable. We have no problem with additional housing. Some leave more modest in size, like the condos on the river. This complex is far too large for the space, the surrounding property uses, and for the size and structure of the homes around it. Thank you.
My name is Madeline LaPonce, and I live at 717 East Main Street. This is the Red House directly across the street from Kaiser's. It's my childhood home, and I lived back there when Rollaway was still in business. I think most of us here are aware that the old Rollaway building is dilapidated and something needs to replace it, or at the very least, it needs to be taken down. I do not think most people gathered here today are unreasonable, and I do not think this is a situation where, no matter what anything goes up, people will be upset because they hate change. I think it is an issue of this specific building. Proposal Section 18.06 says review standards, which Planning Commission states that all proposals must abide by. I believe, for me, there are issues with A and B in particular in this proposal. A states the buildings will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, and that the structure must be planned to take into account the size of the property. B states that there must be well-defined vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Copper Rock's building is way too big, and they also have an issue with parking. When I went to their open house, where they were trying to geek us out on this proposal, they stated that because it is a mixed-use building, they have spots on the roads for parking. I live a few blocks down, and I have an issue with them parking directly on the street in front of my house. I will not be able to accommodate guests, and when I pull out, so the other car in my parking spot can get out, I will not be able to park on the street while they drive out. The building is also planned to house permanent residents, and when I asked what would be done for the people who are parking on the streets during winter, Copper Rock did not realize that you couldn't park overnight on the road for half a year. Because of this, I do not believe that the building is being planned out well to take into account our traffic circulation and spacing. I have to back out on Main Street every single day to drive to work, and it's very difficult already to get out. There is a curve right down the road where cars zoom out at over 60 miles an hour, and it is very hard to tell exactly how many people are on the road because of this. This is going to be harder with all the cars parked on the street obstructing my view. I also think that it's going to be hard to get out, period, when people are coming and going all the time to this giant building. Traffic is a major concern. It's not my only concern. I also have issues with light pollution. I appreciate that they addressed it, but I'm not sure how that's going to be enforced for the residents there. I have issues with noise pollution. I don't think anyone wants to be sitting in their living room and hearing a diner halfway down the road. During the last meeting at Horatio Street, it was discussed via word of mouth that Copper Rock recognized that this would be a big upset to the lifestyle of the people in the area. First time I heard about this was a lawsuit in the mail, so I do not believe that they have properly reached out to the community.
Hello, I'm Donald LaPonce. I live at 717 East Main Street, and not to reinstate what everyone said previously, but I do agree with everything, parking, you know, size of the building, Copper Rock having done the correct communication, and I want to speak a little bit more to the nature of that. First and foremost, I believe any master plan that involved vacating Horatio is not welcomed. Horatio is a small road, but a frequently-used road for convenience of-
Again, sir, we're not talking about the vacation.
Well, I mean, the master plan in general. If it involves getting rid of that road, it shouldn't be approved, and I guess that will bring me to my next point, is that you guys are supposed to be representing us, and no one here wants this plan. The whole neighborhood together have, come together, discussed it, talking about lawsuits and stuff, and as you guys, being voted in by us to represent us, should realize by now that this is not a welcome plan here. I want to say that, in general, these units will not be net positive for the city. Not only are these very small units, about the size of a college dorm or, you know, a nursing home room, but they're very expensive. The city council means that they're about $1,500. With these being so small, no one would want to make this their permanent home, and they mentioned this being a renting property, but someone my age, you know, recent graduate, would never be able to afford a $1,500 unit and of this size, if not even of good quality. My friends have a unit in Allenville that he rents with his girlfriend. It's bigger than this, it has two rooms, kitchen, living room, diner, that only $800. These, not even multiple rooms, are 1,500, twice the price. I just want to say that Copper Rock has not been doing this in good faith. Last week in State Council, they mentioned they had an alternative plan for about a 30 or 33-unit apartment that didn't involve vacating Horatio, yet they have just said to you now this is their only viable option, yet they have alternative plan. I remember mentioning this at the neighborhood meeting, and I'm like, "Do you have alternative plan? Do you look at doing a plan that didn't involve vacating Horatio?" And they told me, "No, they did not, that this was the only one." So, they're not being transparent, they're not being honest. The apartment too big, the units will be too small and overpriced, and furthermore, if you look online, Copper Rock have a lot of complaints in their quality of materials. Please do not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, Craig Bumber, 827 North Washington Street. Just a couple of comments. I've heard some folks talk about green space, of which there is very little in this project. I'm surprised that on the first level of, at least the residential part, is not all parking underneath. It seems like if you could do that, you could actually set the building back off of Main Street, which would seem quite desirable, just because of the noise, a little bit more. And, yeah, I'm not going to go on a lot. I would ask that the Planning Commission table this or do whatever and ask Copper Rock for a couple more options and plans for residents. Thank you.
Which address, sir?
What's that?
Which address?
827 North Washington Street.
Kelly Bishop, 123 North Division. Some of you seem like you don't want to be here tonight. I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but this really affects the people that are in my neighborhood. You can see there's a lot more here. Avery Street is way too small. If you get a chance, go down there and sit and drive, and you'll see that two cars can go. If there's one sitting on the side of the road, you get one car can go through. It's way too narrow. There's no sidewalks. The kids ride their bikes in the road, which is great. We know it, we look for them. There's no sidewalks, though. What are they going to do? That's my biggest safety, or safety is our children, but then you got the safety of the traffic. Traffic up and down Division, average 40 mile an hour, speed limit is 25. They even got it painted up there, speed limit 25. They average about, I'm guessing, 35, 40. You can sit there in the church parking lot and watch them, especially in the morning and the afternoon. I don't know what it is, but they got to race to the top, and then when they get coming down, they got to go by some, and it's dangerous. Falling out there at that corner, can you imagine all the traffic? That's the one way in and out. It's going to be right there at that corner or down at the other end. And then you got the traffic there on Main Street, that's a nightmare. You know, I got this here, make it a plan. Great, and you guys are supposed to help us, and we're going to all decide. All of a sudden, you know, your plan, you're supposed to keep a big-box store from happening in the middle of our neighborhood. I'd rather have the big-box store. We don't need 44 units right there. That's crazy. I'll give you 20 units, no restaurant, nothing like that. 20 units. You can have that all day long, and then everybody can be happy. You'll have plenty of parking, no congestion. Oh, what else? I don't know. That's it.
Mr. Riley, 818 East Main Street. My first concern is the parking and people's safety. When the trees were all brought down by that big storm, people had their brush piled out, and it was, it was as if cars were parked there and we couldn't back out of our driveway. If just two cars are parked in front of my house, I will not be able to see to back out of my driveway, and I will risk getting broadsided. The other concern is that every single house on all three sides on the east half of that property, we're all single-family or duplex zoned. That's it. So, if this is supposed to not take away from the character or the neighborhood, or it's supposed to follow the character of the neighborhood, my house is single-family or duplex zoned. So, how is putting 44 apartments right across the street from me not impacting the character of my neighborhood? And that's every house on the east side on all three sides. So, I think that's a big concern. Thank you.
John Lehrer, 524 East Main Street. This project here is basically a no-frills project. It's not going to increase the value of any housing in the neighborhood, it's going to decrease values. Copper Rock comes in here and they want to swap around all this parking. Guy comes up there and he says, "You want to swap, the residents can park over here, they can park over in the restaurant parking." That's kind of ridiculous. The restaurants should have adequate parking for the restaurant, the housing, people should have adequate parking for the housing. The best use for this property would be single-family homes, but I don't, you know, there's a lot of cost involved and everything else, but that would be the best thing for this property and not this multiple-family thing. If a multiple-family thing is approved, it should be a lot less units than what Copper Rock is proposing, probably half that many. And if you should go up there and just walk around that property yourself, you'd understand how small that property really is. You know, it's not that big, just go up there and walk around the block. This is not a good project for the east side of town, and it's, like I said, it's not going to do anything for the east side of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Tyler Cap, 280 K-N-O. I want to start by reading a sentence from the site plan application before I get my hands slapped here. Description of proposed development, it says, "Combined parcels, including the vacation of Horatio Street, develop a new 44-unit apartment-grade apartment project with approximately 300 square feet of commercial space." So, there is that component to it. I understand procedure, that's not part of this, but it is a factor of it, and I would hope that we're at least taking that into account, we're issuing permits with that dot or something like that, and hook you up with that. I think that's a critical component. As one of the residents, I mentioned earlier, it's probably important that we, you know, there's a lot of unknowns to this, perhaps table it until those are figured out, including the status of the vacating of the street, because as it is written in the site plan, that does dictate what their design, their role would look like for the site. The one element here that was probably not discussed by others, but it does affect me on the west side of the city, is that 25,000 gallons of water, on average, it looks like, they've done some math on that, is expected to be used for these types of developments on average. I think we have water issue in the town right now, since we have to turn off our sprinklers to hot-even sprinkling. I think it's a critical factor we have to figure out before we start building more units or commercial property that's going to just use on that water more often.